Darlene Breckinridge, here. Dennisette Clark, here. Jeri Ann Edgins, here. John Arfider, here. Ronnie Jacks, here.
Takes us to the minutes of the February sixth, two thousand seventeen regulation session. Some revision recurrences, I'll go through them.
Um, sorry.
Good discussion. Ian Derrickson will continue to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, five in favor, zero votes. Next time on the UNHSC public presentation, individuals present on the microphone or access to the microphone to say your name and address for speaking. You have a five minute time, or should you exit before we begin?
Hi, um, I want to do a second review. Hi, I want to speak tonight regarding the resolution two thousand seventeen dash four. The council reconsidered the decision in two thousand fourteen to any participation or cost of independent healthcare coverage for the building employees. Health insurance for being small sized businesses, employers, et cetera, come out of the city of Cameron's. Part of what I think is better today. I've seen firsthand the impacts that healthcare legislation has had on employers, uh, back to two thousand ten. So, I did some looking and out of my fifty commercial health accounts that I currently have, um, only four of them provide one hundred percent coverage for employees and residents. One hundred percent healthcare coverage, um, has been realized by an extreme huge number of people in the workforce today. That being said, of the four employers that I found that offered one hundred percent, um, one of those is a neighboring municipality. One is nearby county. One is a nearby county nine one one dispatch office, and the other is a nearby office. As a member of the Cameron Police Division Board, um, I've seen how this decision back in two thousand fourteen impacted, uh, the city's ability to recruit new officers and dispatchers specifically. Building the recent openings for these positions has been a topic we've talked about at each of our recent Police Division Board meetings. And we've seen multiple highly qualified applicants turn down potential offers of employment. What's been the package specifically has been outlined in the coverage just when you did it. So, I believe reversing the decision two thousand fourteen by way of this bill will help the city attract the necessary personnel to build these positions and retain key personnel for years to come. And the members of the Police Division Board with whom I've spoken on this specific issue agree with me a hundred percent. As a, as a, as a Police Division Board, we see the police department doing its best to attract, uh, and retain top talent on an uneven playing field, uh, because candidates, even current, uh, officers, dispatchers, et cetera, can go to these, some of the aforementioned entities and receive a hundred percent healthcare coverage for themselves and their families alongside competitive pay. I don't know for certain, but I suspect that this is kind of the same situation that they see in other departments throughout the city. So, I hope you will reconsider, or I'm sorry, I hope you will consider reversing the decision to eliminate, uh, participation in health, independent healthcare costs. So, city departments and their managers can have the tools necessary to re-tap, to attract and retain high caliber personnel for the city and our residents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will, back again. Very tired from work all day. First I've got the thought that I'm a little bit under the rest. I mean, time got away from me and weather got a little bit rough and that kind of appropriate. This is probably the last time you're ever gonna see me until about maybe June. And I got your letter in mail for the sidewalk from the partial, I very appreciate that. Looks like we're good to go. Projected numbers so far, I know it's early in the year, we're looking at one twenty-five and one fifty, and that's now you would say, uh, shows up. Uh, one thing I'd like to do is sit on hard, you guys have emails, if I haven't checked my emails, I've got twenty emails from the same person we did it all with. I'll probably just be back for now. Projected numbers for the, uh, the poker we have coming up, two weeks ahead of the start of July, between thirty-five and fifty, which should also bring some pretty good business to Cameron. It'll be good for us, it'll be good for the community. Look forward to that. The other thing I have left is, I need to find the right place, I'm sorry, I had a chance to come out here, uh, within planning on church and around. But when they put the sidewalk in on the street, they put that in the drainage system. There's some uneven ground there, so they're running a little bit of dirt to build it. Since then it's settled and it's, it's pretty dangerous, so is that something that is, I have a mind to get it, if there's an accident, some dirt up, I'll get it, throw it down.
Yeah, we get a hold of this tomorrow.
About? Yeah, I think you're saying.
Thursday, Thursday, work?
Sure.
Okay. Other than that, that's about all I have. We just wanna keep a, be a, invite the, the church and pantry, we really clean up right now, move the bottles up. If only you guys are happy about everything we're saying. If not, let me give you my phone number in case you can't catch me, there's eight one six, six three two, zero two three.
The poker, you don't let me ask you, I'm sorry. You said you had, is that the one that you had emails last year?
Yes, yeah, yeah, uh, real quickly. It's a hundred and twenty-five mile ride, it takes about five, six hours, we through five counties, give or take. So, we have Sierra Cameron, we have sixty-nine, Lawson, down E to C, into Polo, back up Polo, to one sixteen, thirty-five, thirty-five, thirty-three, to Del C, to back thirty-three, thirty-three, up one sixteen, one sixteen, over sixty-five, sixty-nine, back thirty-six. Thirty-six down thirty-three, thirty-three down six, six back thirty-five, and then you know, done.
Lost you thirty-three.
Right, I got you.
So, they're coming back there and spending money?
Absolutely gonna spend money back there. And not only that, they need some, they need some gift cards, fuel there, so I don't know that, I will go back there too. We'll get gas here, we'll be eating here. Other than that, you guys, you guys doing everything, we okay? No, no questions? Not anything? Good, I'm out, see you later.
Thanks. Anyone else here? Ian Derrickson, that takes us to the city, and?
Well, I'll put Terry at the top of my list and then I'll finish up after he's said he wants to report, so. Adam Barrett, who's the council, Adam Corr, Mr. Administrator, thank you very much. My name is Terry Gromery, I'm developing here, wanting to get you all a little bit of an update. I will say this, I'm not gonna be able to do things like giving names, obviously, projects, things that make you particularly excited, kind of what we've been doing, what we think, uh, some things to come. We have one project that we've actually been working on for three years, and I know this sounds like a weird deal, but it's not. This project is kind of in limbo right now. It's on hold, it's still an active project with the state of Missouri and Kansas City area development council. I've actually worked with this company in the past, five years to make that decision, so longer than normal. But this is a company that were able to do that, they're looking at four in northwest Missouri, five, two, five communities in northwest Missouri, and we are one of those. But again, they kind of put this project on hold, which is kind of their MO, that's how they see it operating. We have new projects come in, uh, circles of in here, uh, it's a KCADC project, it's a distribution warehouse. They're working in the general Kansas City area. They have not given us any details, that's how fresh this project is. KCADC just wanted us to be aware that we are on their radar, and when they say on their radar, I'm not sure that means the company. Multiple patients have shown that we're the, uh, on this KCADC radar. One of the enticing points of why we are on their radar is because of the purchase of your new industrial land. We have another project that came in last, the end of last week, uh, into the KCADC state project. They're a national site selection company, it's a lot to, to their attention, they're looking to stay quality. But in the area around here, we are in that area, leading area, and, uh, there's a lot of things that would be enticing that. I actually would recommend to them to look at property, city homes, like Walmart, behind their family, teenagers. It's a, uh, it's a good project, it's a nice wage, it goes with it, uh, it's a big capital investment that goes with it. Company wants to lease, I'll tell you, they are looking for existing building, if they find an existing building, we're on, on heading. They do want to, to be the renewal sites, I have the company, give them more information, we'll be going to fill that building. So, if you have any other part, I'd talk off to them. Sometimes I'll just be, uh, just, I'll let it for the, have old stuff to be honest with you. However, we do have a project, um, that is finishing up its last few diligence, that is, uh, out of US thirty-six, five, six. It's a great project. Worked on this project since they assigned the contract, and, uh, and, uh, it's taken them long. Be a project, this community would be sexually proud of. I know, presented the company very well, I've worked with them on other projects. And, uh, they're doing their due diligence, as I stated, they've already done phase one, they're going to do a phase two, and, uh, they've done their cultural, uh, some of your, it's a nice for some. They have, there are a couple of issues, but it doesn't appear to be anything that is, uh, that hard of an issue to get over, get through. So, I would expect, uh, sponsors from them in the next six days, and, uh, maybe for that. We have a, um, they're working with a sit-down style restaurant, national chain, um, that, I can tell you, I think you're right here, and the surrounding area, we're, we're in the line for it, we just done. None of these are, uh, purely lunching, whatever, jump right on and take it. It's a lot of work to do, uh, this is one that's a very tough one to get, a bunch of locations, so hopefully we're gonna pull that off. We have a, um, another restaurant that we're working with, which is a fast food restaurant. It's, uh, not quite as far along as the other one, but it's a national chain, it would be a nice addition to Cameron, uh, facilities that we already have, and, uh, it would be a great feeling to come off the island. And, uh, we are, I have negotiations with that, we're in, in greater terms, say, but we are in talks, uh, with a developer in Big Boxville. This would be a big facility that occurs about, I will tell you, we are limited on what we can handle. It may come down to population numbers, but it does, I would have to say probably in short, in the best way. But the draw area may bring us back, or we, they, they don't necessarily have to draw their work into the city. They would draw with, uh, wow, three, this, I mean, there's probably like a single area where they could stout against it. Other than that, they would work, they would, like, sort of stout, southwest, so, we're working on that. And I was just contacted a couple of weeks ago by a developer, real estate developer, uh, out of the east side of the state, and just looking at cropping four buildings, you know, half the buildings, or they have a property, it's a science that he's asking. Got four, I'm doing, uh, it's retail, uh, my guess is probably more soft goods, uh, which the community can use, and, uh, these great developers, they do work with straightforward, uh, his tracker, most developers will be, listen, his tracker, so, very excited about that. Saying that, I'm glad that, answering questions, I apologize for not being able to give his names, I've burned them down, this one, and, uh, it's not a pleasant experience, so, it's not how you'd like it.
I'll just add one comment. Twenty plus years ago, when we were doing our residential development, I had a conversation with a gentleman who had done a lot of development, this comment should be, activity breeds activity. And when we did our subdivision, they had not been on for ten years, and a time we got on road, there was a total, total four of us, four different subdivisions that called out, and when one happened, thirteen years. And in visiting with, uh, the selling agent of the, of used to be the old Pringles lot, he made a comment to me, if I understood it correctly, that he'd been working on that for at least a year, and the reason that I bought it was he saw the city purchase, going for the industrial park. Thought if things were gonna happen here, it would be safe to invest in coming here. And that's how we pay for streets and police and fires, that kind of activity. So, uh, there's lots of good things going on, lots of good conversations, and I, so, uh, I think we're in consistent progress.
Uh, the only thing that I have is, first of all, um, I thought the incentive being controlled, uh, it's what I've been looking for, for a long time. I, I'm just looking forward to inviting, in fact, I'd love to see you come in on a monthly basis. I don't necessarily need to know specifics, I get that, I understand. But I'd sure like to know, and, and be kept up on activity that we're talking about with the land that we purchased. I want to know where are we at, where are we going? Cause quite honestly, that was a big chunk of change that, that we threw down, it's a big bet, is, is the way I look at it. So, this is when, quite honestly, is gonna be when you're gonna earn more, uh, to me, is, is getting that, getting something in there, getting, getting there, a good something in there as quick as you can. Cause without that, I think we're gonna be in a little bit of trouble. So, anyway, I just wanted to tell you, I do appreciate you coming up today and.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it, and, uh, I'll be glad to do that, uh, month before, it's no problem.
Thank you.
And, um, I will tell you, I didn't, I don't recall my mission downstairs, I didn't meet with Mark and, uh, the engineering folks last week, I guess it was. There is a lot of work to be done there, but I can also say this, that, uh, in the last fifteen years, uh, or twelve years anyway, uh, I have not seen the excitement out of the state, uh, for KCADC, as they were running that one around Christmas, and planning about planning, and they are excited. And their comment was, as soon as you get the plans, when they're done, as soon as you get those plans done, um, then we're coming up to take a tour. And the other thing that I have mentioned too, uh, is that once we do start doing smaller things in there, infrastructure into that nature, at least get all the plans done, everything else we have to do. Planning on bringing another group of industrial real estate folks out of Kansas City, and bringing them up with KCADC, tour that, let them know that it's there, cause a lot of those leads, that's where they come from. Most of them come from KCADC, but to go from maybe some of those guys, uh, over to now, I'm not sure this will be, that, you've got great piece of property out there, you've got a marvelous piece of property, I've been doing this, uh, way, obviously way too long to enjoy it, but I've been doing this since eighty-nine. And, uh, I've built two and parts of another industrial park, and, uh, that's as good a site as I've come across, and not brand new, but in fact, it's, in that period of time, I've built a hundred seventy-five acres. I actually, I did that, I filled two hundred seventy-five, eighty-five acres, uh, altogether, and, uh, it's not in the situation of the building that'll count, but if you had the product, market, you can market, you've got great location, that's, it's time, so. Thank you all very much. Finished rest of my list here, the under projects, uh, the grocery project where our staff's reviewing plans, specs, and estimate, and the engineer, uh, will sign some documents and advertise, advertise for construction efforts and comments. Uh, pedestrian bridge at the trail, uh, part of the west is making revisions to that layout, uh, based on our comments and the similar to the comments now. The industrial park, uh, investigation, the jury committee, uh, met with the consultants, and the consultants would like to meet with council, uh, in a workshop on March fifteenth, and that has been, uh, related to you. I think for three thirty time is the best we can do on that, so, um, that is still on as far as, uh, today, so. Sewer projects, wastewater plant, uh, generator is kind of a escape for start of the past week today, I don't know if that was accomplished yet, but, uh, that thing is, um, full power generator, we're in the entire wastewater, uh, plant operation. Uh, the animal shelter, uh, the architects are in the, the design phase of the, uh, building, and we're still investigating the north water tower for, uh, a suitable for site. There are a few challenges there that, that we knew about, one of those, uh, forced us to have to move it a little bit, uh, in location. So, we'll go out this week hopefully and check the, uh, the existing, we can see if it's workable up there, without approaching on any of that. Head start facility, uh, currently still doing, uh, still doing big work, uh, for the, uh, everything's improved, we're doing the environmental submittals, uh, right now for the, uh, project, and there are a, a ton of things that have to be done, so CAPS, ATO, and LOKAN, and the city will, uh, all work together to submit all those documents required by the funding agencies. So, this is a bit of a, we're brought here, everything's done, we're gonna find so far, and, uh, we will be the passer for that, we won't spend any funds, uh, other than pass through for the, uh, the financing to, uh, kick the S A J O C A. And we will do the infrastructure improvements around the, uh, area as we would in the way sidewalks in the right way improvements, so, uh, they help me if that, uh, project happened. They'd like to see contributions from the, uh, city for these grants too, so, we're able to do that, it's something to be done anyway. In conjunction with road street, though, has sidewalks up there, those will all be in the right, the same area, so that'd be nice. Uh, under the development projects, uh, some stuff I'm doing, uh, in addition to what Terry mentioned, is the new travel center, uh, should be, uh, starting construction here if it hasn't already, any time now. And the, uh, on the other side of the highway, the, uh, Chums parking expansion is, uh, going well too, so it's, uh, got a lot of work going on up there. New home construction that appears to be, did a pretty good start this year, uh, economically, everything is really, uh, picked up, it's been busy. We talked earlier about the trail naming, uh, uh, project, and getting some information from Pat Jones, she did forward that to me. I haven't really finished reviewing that, but I do know it's probably not gonna be something that we're gonna be looking at, it's a little different than what we're looking at, but I'll, I'll take a look at that and send it all, I can send council copies of all that too. It's, uh, uh, the Purple Heart Trail System, which is really, uh, uh, is, many of the, the state highways, uh, becoming a Purple Heart Trail System, not, not a specific Trail, so, um, I'll, but I'll, I'll finish looking into that, get it, I'll do if you'd like to, uh, see that, and that's all I have.
I have one, and there's probably gonna be a lot of gaps, especially from everybody up here, and I don't know if this is the right time, so stop me if it isn't, okay, and we'll bring you back. Then why is, uh, everything that's gone on and, um, the purchase of the land and our raising our level for rates, I would really like to maybe revisit and try, maybe lower those rates back down for our taxpayers.
Is that something we can discuss, that anybody want to look at the effects of it?
I would like to do that.
Can you do the final thing? That places unfinished business, we have a second final reading on the two thousand seven, two thousand four.
Bill two thousand seventeen dash four, an ordinance optimizing an amendment to the agreement by in between the city of Cameron, Clinton, and DeKalb counties in Missouri, and Alliance Water Resources Incorporated for management and operations services at the Cameron wastewater facility.
I entertain a motion to pass vote two thousand seventeen, on a second reading.
Second.
Move to second, this session. Ian Derrickson, I will proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, five in favor, zero votes. I entertain a motion to pass vote two thousand seventeen dash four, on a third reading.
So.
Leading the second discussion.
Darlene Breckinridge, yes. Dennisette Clark, yes. Jeri Ann Edgins, yes. John Arfider, yes. Ronnie Jacks, yes.
Takes us to the discussion of the fence, can I explain, uh, Jerry, did you have an interest in that?
I submitted a proposal to the city.
The, uh, uh, going from memory, I, I thought that was in the packet, the, uh, roughly two hundred dollars for a cost of the game. I don't have any, the, the original offer, if I remember, was that drew pretty much with the cost of fence, for thirty thousand dollars.
Putting up the areas, I understand that it looks pretty poorly down, it's, uh, just, all the grass is grown up, it's, it's, uh, finished, it's.
I don't know which part you referred to there.
The part of the fence?
Something the city did, or?
Yeah. Can I, sure, what's, what's it look like right now?
Let me respond to what Mark said, the original proposal was not for me to pay for the fence, Mark, the original proposal is a proposal you're looking at tonight, that I sent to the city in two thousand fifteen.
If you don't like, if you don't like, thank you.
If you ask me what the fence looks like, you're gonna get biased, okay, I, I hate the fence, the fence is a open wire fence that was made as quickly as possible, and where water courses from, under the fence, the fence posts no longer are in the ground, because they've been. And where water courses run under the fence, the fence posts no longer are in the ground because they've been robed in a way. Where a larger water course on the eastern edge of my property lies, instead of using a woven wire fence, they used four foot by ten foot cattle panels and put the cattle panels and attached them with bailing wire and then adjusted them down the hillside, which have now laid over. So I'm, I'm sorry, I, I hate, I hate to take your attention and complain about fence, I can't resist.
Yeah, listen, there's problems with it.
Yeah. You don't, you don't have to look too hard, Mark, see if there's a problem with it, you can walk out there and see.
Okay.
Here's my question, so you, you submitted this two thousand fifteen. And from everything I got, I asked you to send me all emails, you did. I went through and looked at it, it looked like that you had proposed something. Zach came back and said, okay, then just a couple more questions. So then you sent something back and then it was, that's it, never mind, we don't want to do it. This is two thousand fifteen, correct? So I, I guess, I don't understand as council, how we got back to two thousand and seventeen now? We're talking about a fence that happened two years ago, that we've already turned down. And now we're asking you to resubmit the same stuff that you submitted before? This just doesn't make sense to me.
I, I, I heard, uh, counsel and fire, I don't even understand why we're trying to entertain this again. Why are we doing this? You already turned it down, why are you trying to give me pay for it again?
No, cause the original was thirty thousand dollars.
Original was said that, that if you couldn't have, if he could just buy the gates, that they would pay for the fence if that would let them have the gates. And that was not ours, that was, that was given in a section right here, it's in the fence. And then now he says he didn't say that.
Yeah, but why are we?
Ronnie, I didn't say I didn't say that.
Well.
I never said I didn't say that. What I said that I didn't say was at the next meeting, when you accused me of being bratty and making up my own.
I said the wrong thing, I don't, I, I know I heard it, I, and neither one of us was at the next meeting, which is rare for me. Cause I probably missed five in ten years plus.
But, 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 but don't say that I didn't say that.
Just calm down, you did say, and you're going to pay for the fence.
Absolutely, I did.
So if you're ready to pay for the fence, now, you know, it sounds like we need to talk to the guy who put it in and maybe get some warranty worked out, alright? But if you're willing to top up thirty thousand dollars and then pay the additional, it's not, it's not at two hundred dollars to put a gate in. Now, it's, it's, the fence has to be taken apart.
Why did Zach Johnson send me an email saying, we would like for you to submit a proposal to put a gate in the fence? That's why, that's why I'm worried.
Email, they discussed it and then decided that it wasn't, it wasn't something that they wanted to do.
Then why, then why did Zach Johnson invite me to submit another proposal for another gate in the fence?
I was thinking about, is it two hundred dollar gate, I mean, you have this, they do valves, it's a two hundred dollar gate, I don't see a issue.
I don't think this is a bad idea. He got thirty thousand dollars for the fence. Twenty dollars for the paper, the fence, he was turned down by the city, two thousand.
Okay, that should be the end of the.
Yeah, but why, why would you write it back up again?
I did, I did.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think him saying he was going to be willing to put another gate in, he never said that.
But, council, when Zach Johnson sent me another email inviting me to submit another proposal to put a gate in the fence, I said, sure, Zach. Now, I also said, I'm reminded of the definition of the saying, doing the same thing and expecting a different result. But what have I got to lose? The worst that can happen is the city says no again. Okay, if you want to say no again, say no again. But I'm, just to clarify, I'm asking the city to pay for the gate, whether it's a two hundred dollar gate or a two thousand dollar gate. I'm paying for the gate, but ladies and gentlemen, I'm only here responding to the email that I got from Zach Johnson. Is Zach?
Yep, I'm here.
Zach, could you, could you confirm for me that you emailed me, invited me to submit a proposal for a gate in the fence?
Yes, that, that's right.
I think, I'm aware of it, to get a hold of them as well at the last meeting.
Correct.
And I submitted a proposal, all I'm asking is if you want to vote on it, vote on it. If you don't want to vote on it, that's your prerogative as well.
Now, I think we just have had a communication breakdown, you know, what we had understood, what you were intending, and then maybe something you can email.
I missed three more of the call.
That's my fourth, I think we have it.
Thank you.
So, can we do some sort of motion to get this solved? Not that it sort of doesn't show up that time, I'm tired of seeing it on there. He's, honestly, this is the third attempt, we've had a friend who drew in. Uh, I don't, I don't feel like that we're going to change our opinion from what we originally said in two thousand fifteen. So what, what do I do to motion to?
I would say a motion to remove it, probably turn it up.
I'd like to make a motion to remove this from the agenda on board.
I want to second it. Can you second it? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, zero opposed. Next, let's do new business, do you want to look into relation application for the county board?
The King Bruce Patrick Daniel, we put this is, is the, uh, process we're looking for to do for them to, to have a bank with. And they submitted all the information, uh, A T D, and, uh, it can be passed by motion and a vote.
So we'll entertain a motion to pass the, what license for the hearing? Bill move. Move to second discussion. We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, five in favor, zero opposed. Can I sign on the agenda with your overall rating of bill two thousand seventeen dash five?
Bill two thousand seventeen dash five, an ordinance providing for the annexation of unincorporated territory and the extension of the corporate limits of the city of Cameron, Clinton, and DeKalb counties in Missouri, all pursuant to section seven one point zero one two of the revised statutes of Missouri as amended business part.
I want to entertain a motion to pass bill two thousand seventeen dash five on the first reading.
So.
Moving to second discussion.
This, uh, bill is, uh, we handed this land, uh, for several reasons. And we did hold our public hearings and sent letters to, uh, adjacent property owners, advised them of what we're doing and that it would not affect their property. Uh, and did ask, uh, President Woodbridge, uh, subdivision, if they, this was not part of their, uh, land at all, had nothing to do with their property, but if they did want the city to consider an annuity, to let us know. And we didn't receive any comments, uh, for or against, uh, annexation on either, uh, on either public hearing. And the, uh, uh, one, one of the important reasons is to serve the area with the city utilities that would need to be, um, in the city. Uh, electric powered water and sewer that, uh, we can extend that side. Which is, you know, there's several reasons, another reason is to, uh, the city land, so just like the reservoirs, we, uh, got to the city limits here a few years ago, so it's just good practice, doing it fits the land more valuable as well, so.
Do you have a question?
I do. Um, do we have any idea for the costs for the utility expansions that are going to need to take place? Including electric powered water, sewer. I know at one time I was told when I, when I asked a question about getting gas sent out there, I was told they couldn't get it across the highway. So now we're curious, surely they're not going to try to let it propagate now.
Uh, gas is across the highway, but we don't, I don't know what size lines they have. But I do know they are interested in circuit necessary as long as they're east of thirty-five.
Okay.
Uh, and they're still working on it as far as I know. On the cost extending utilities, we don't have engineering numbers, but just figuring, um, cost per foot of extension. I'm estimating we could do electric, uh, with our crew for probably a hundred thousand dollars. Water for a hundred thousand or less and sewer for about that. So there are, uh, sewer's close, uh, but it's more expensive than water to install. Uh, sewer would be less than that probably, so just to get it to the site. Now, once you get on the property, uh, to go to the Caldwell County side and to extend all the way up, depending on what needs to be done up there, then that'll be a lot, uh, more work and expense because it depends on what goes in there. If you're, uh, don't extend a lot of high capacity stuff, it'll get expensive, it just depends on how that battles out with this. That's why we have the consultants to help us with that part of the part. We could pretty much get utilities there, um, on our own, but, uh, after that point, it will, uh, it's going to take a lot of planning to develop the rest of it for the utilities to use.
Any other questions? We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Three in favor, two opposed. I want to entertain a motion to suspend the rules, pass bill two thousand seventeen dash five on the second reading.
So.
Second.
Moving to second discussion. We'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Three in favor, two opposed. I want to entertain a motion to pass bill two thousand seventeen dash five on the second reading.
So. Second.
Moving to second.
Dennis M. Clark.
Yes.
Jeri Ann Edmonds.
Yes.
John R. Figer.
Aye.
Ronnie Jack.
Yes.
Darlene Breckenridge.
No.
Next, let's do the first reading on bill two thousand sixteen dash six, two thousand seventeen.
Bill two thousand seventeen dash six, an ordinance calling a special election in the city of Cameron, Clinton, and DeKalb counties in Missouri, on the question of whether the city shall impose a local use tax on out of state purchases at a rate equal to the rate of the local sales tax in effect in the city.
I want to entertain a motion to pass bill two thousand seventeen dash six on the first reading.
So. Second.
Moving to second discussion.
This, uh, uh, bill is going to be needed for, uh, cities in Missouri to be able to collect taxes on these out of state, uh, purchases. And this is, uh, was basically started, uh, through my mouth because of Amazon. Uh, and there's going to be more things to follow as far as internet sales sales versus the sales tax. There's a lot more implications of this as far as on the national level and how this is enforced. Uh, every city, I think, in Missouri that has proposed this has passed it because it's unfair to the local vendors. Uh, and that's why we want to get this on the books, uh, as soon as we can. And then we will, uh, try for, uh, I think it always valid, uh, for this particular one here. So it's, uh, just a way of getting taxes that we are due normally anyway.
Questions?
I will just say, yes. I will just say, uh, that when I decided to own this council position, I promised I would not vote to put any new taxes on the books unless it was an emergency situation. This is not an emergency and I have a problem worrying about what's unfair to people. Uh, what I believe is unfair, others may not believe is unfair. Uh, so I look at this and I think, we have enough taxes on our citizens as is. So, uh, you can stop with that for a little bit, but I just, I'm tired of unfair and making these assumptions that a little vendor are smart enough to compete in the, uh, on the web, so, you know.
We're not going to go with the test, we're just putting it on, uh, and we're going to answer it.
First, let me vote, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Aye.
Three in favor, two opposed. Can I sign on, I want to entertain a resolution two thousand seventeen dash four.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash four, a resolution to modify employee benefits for the city of Cameron, Clinton, and DeKalb counties in Missouri.
I want to entertain a motion to pass the resolution two thousand seventeen dash four.
So. Second.
Moving to second discussion.
So I would like to table this for proper discussion because we received some information. And at our last meeting, several agreed to have a resolution ready, they provided all the information. I don't want to pass something and then do it like, let's pass it now and read it later. I want to come up with something that is agreeable to everyone and benefits, benefits our police officers and, and, and. I'm not saying I, I don't agree with it, I'm just saying I think we need to discuss it and come up with a, a good plan to benefit us and, um.
Can you second? I would second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
There's a discussion on the motion. Sorry, Mark. Is there a discussion on table, or is it any book directive? This would be a discussion on table, then? You know, my, my understanding was this is, and, and this was an experiment that we tried several years ago. And, you know, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. It causes problems with the, uh, Public Works Department, we struggled hiring somebody and we did not happen to, uh, uh, give them a ten thousand dollar raise and reclassify the decision. Uh, my understanding was in with the chief that it's continued to cause problems. Uh, it continues to surface and, uh, we got information on, on neighboring municipalities, that's who we have to compete with. And so I do assign time sensitivity, I think we're just talking about going back to doing what we originally were. Uh, I think that's forty-seven percent, uh, person, family and then ninety percent the employee. So I do this time sensitivity to allow the, uh, city staff, the city manager, and department heads to hire the kind of personnel they need to, uh, get them and retain them. So, uh, I am not in favor of taking a motion in point two and four. Not for earlier.
Well, my, my position on it is, we have a lot of wonderful employees right now. And if you think that we can't hire someone who really wants a job without that kind of packaging and that they're not going to employee, you have it totally wrong.
I'd like to just say, since I have the numbers back, thank you, chief, for getting those numbers to us. I actually looked at and decided, well, let me get down a little bit. And this is why I'm in, in favor of tabling it, because I think maybe we need to do a little more. So it could even be a situation where we, we look at and possibly change some things up, maybe increase some things, increase others. But when I went through and pulled out of the seventeen cities that were listed, that I could find both numbers, um, the family portion, which is kind of crazy, was forty-seven percent. Our family portion was forty-seven point six three percent. We had cities that had, that were paying CBO, uh, along with us. We had other cities that were paying as high as, I think I saw one in Gladstone, not sure that that's real comparable, but it was at a hundred percent for, for employment and, and I guess his location, they probably have to compete to get as well against Kansas City and, and others. So as I'm looking through it, I would rather take this information back, I'd rather get the chief, I'd rather have maybe a couple of the employees, uh, sit down with us. But I'd also like to get a couple of our healthcare providers, I've constantly asked to talk to the new, I, I think, I venture to say it's H, H two eight was the name of that company. Uh, maybe looking at self-insure, a larger portion for the city and, 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 uh, there's so many different ways that we could look at this. What I don't want to do is just go back to being the same as we were. It didn't, apparently, there was a reason that we chose. It didn't, apparently, there was a reason that we chose to at least try something different. And I'm okay with not continuing on with that, but maybe there's something better. And that's why I'd like to spend some time to really focus on looking at the stats that you provided. We spent time to provide and, and then look at it. So that was why I'm in agreement with the table, 'cause you know, as well as anybody in here, how much I appreciate you guys, um, so...
And I, and I think we all do, but I, I want us best for the whole. And I just don't wanna rush through something. I don't feel like it's that urgent. We need to research. We need to get you the best thing we can get. That, that's my only concern.
Go ahead.
I'm happy. Surprised that I had three days after we had our talk, yes, it came out. Missouri Police Chiefs Association sent out, um, a packet that has data across the state of Missouri that had all this information and pay and everything. Uh, Gladstone isn't much bigger than us. I was trying to keep it comparable places that we're losing people to. And again, this is not just a police department. This is for the city of Cameron and for all of them. I'm, I'm the one who bought it forward and, and our department is the biggest department.
Oh, sure.
We're just having struggle right now finding help. I also then want, I stayed away from St. Louis because their salaries are starting out at forty to fifty thousand dollars for a new police officer. So St. Louis is different on that side of the state than it is. When I got down in Springfield, salaries were comparable. Then we get to Carney. When I got to Harrisonville and Smithville, they had very good benefit packages, but their costs are starting out at five thousand dollars more than what we need to start out. This package had a lot of things. When I lived over there, then I was reached out to the ones that, um, Maryville, A and R area, for what's the one question sort of looking at. So that's kinda what I said a lot. I'd actually go back and ask them like that.
I, I appreciate that.
Do, do you feel like it's something that is so urgent that we need to have it tonight? Your honest opinion?
I'm kinda biased.
You're down.
I'm a big one, I'm down. I was down since October, and I had people coming, this is our number one. And they put pencil and paper down with benefit packages and how much is coming out. But I'm not a business person. I don't look at insurance. But I don't know how some of these businesses have such good insurance that we're losing some dispatches to places. And it's like, they tell me how much they pay a month, and I'm like, I just don't know, but I don't...
But also, it's also my understanding that we were looking at this because it has minimal impact on the general fund. So we're able to offer what we offer other employees without having a huge impact. And that's why I've been worried, so...
Well, one thing too is, uh, you're not aware of, uh, but the, you're aware that we're in the process of looking for committee development director. We finished those interviews, uh, last week, and I wanna, uh, make a, try to negotiate with the person that we think is best suited for the position this week. This may be a factor, it may not, I don't know, but it has been in the past, because we don't have this. We're kinda disavowing the genuine way, and this is just another thing to, um, make it worse, so... And for what that's worth.
To, to your question, you've asked us tonight, and I'm gonna have twenty people in front of me who are willing to say, hey, you gotta change it up, I'm gonna have that. I mean, I'm gonna listen to that. It's just down the road, what we've lost, and there's a bunch of people here and there, and there's also people leaving. And it's just, it's overall, but it's across the state. Everywhere I go, police chiefs come and everything. People are not wanting to get into line work, and so now I have to, as a department head, I have to put Cameron out there where I can get the best employees. I don't wanna start reaching the morning I've heard of other clubs, you know, knocking down how they're doing that. And I, I would feel that I wanna be a good employee, so I gotta represent the city. And so I should...
Did you look at any, uh, signing bonuses? I don't remember if I brought that up previously. I know that that can be a good tool to get in the door.
I thought about that. With our dispatch positions that we're having, I didn't know whether a thousand dollar, a two thousand dollar signing bonus and then sign a contract over this to be here for showing the years to get that back down. But I have thought about that. But I also know the department head, the budget's tight, as it is in the workup, so I don't know if that's something, I guess guidance, yeah, I'm all for that. If that can make us come back to the top and we're people wanting to have a work for us, I'm glad to play with that. Okay, we're, we, we're gonna have to nail the new police officer in for dispatch. Dispatching, we're not getting this coming in. I have four people for one position. It's just, that's what I said. I think it happens across the states, or we're on, we're on the same side. When you see them, they're just high above the paper, they can people apply for, I never thought I would see that. When you see over on Pollard Campus, the way they're putting out videos, trying to entice people. I'm in the same game. I'm just trying to use what I can, so that's why I have to work with this.
Will you proceed to vote?
Well, I'd like to have one more quick question tomorrow. Um, do we, can we offer a, a sort of HSA or more funding on the city, from the city perspective, to do more self-insurance if we decide to go down this path? Is there, uh, is there money available to where we can cover that on, on, on both regards? And I know with the HSA, it's really, it goes back to the employee in a lot of cases, but there's still ways we can actually put in so much into that.
Well, I don't, one thing I don't know, municipals can even do bonuses for asylum. I don't know if that's even legal, uh...
Okay.
And if you do, you do it for all employees or just sub-employees?
Do you have it for hired?
For anybody?
We can hire a kid who worked for the summer, we didn't send him home.
Well, we have the kids.
That's temporary, that's temporary.
And this is why I think we should take on it, because we're gonna bore the heck out of folks.
Well, but there's nothing especially, if we go into this further and pass a regulation out, it's gonna affect our employees that are today. You can always infer this later, there's nothing that's certain, we're gonna hear.
I don't, like, I agree that factors pass, that's just, uh, I don't want to appear to go beyond.
So do you assume you live up to family? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two in favor, three opposed. Proceed to vote for the resolution two thousand seventeen dash four. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Three in favor to oppose. Takes the resolution two thousand seventeen dash five.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash four, a resolution to the city of Cameron, Clinton and Decatur Counties, Missouri, for membership request in the inter-local purchasing system, national purchasing cooperative operating as the by-board.
I want any motion passed resolution two thousand seventeen dash five. Move.
Second.
Moving to second discussion.
Thank you. Anybody, mayor, councilman? Uh, the resolution before you is, uh, for acceptance of membership in the inter-local, uh, purchasing system. Uh, the city Cameron is currently, uh, members of a number of different local corporate purchases. This one is by board. Uh, the reason we're asking, uh, council approval for membership of this is the park board, which is not gonna take advantage of this one upcoming project. A few residents, uh, Park Valley, Paul Towne.
Any questions? Any, there is none. We'll proceed to vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Takes the resolution two thousand seventeen dash six.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash six, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton and Decatur Counties, Missouri, accepting the bid for a small melter applicator through the Missouri Department of Transportation bids for a crack color super shot one twenty-five feet crack seal machine.
I want any motion passed bill two thousand seventeen dash six.
So move. Second.
Moving to second discussion.
Thank you again. Uh, this particular resolution is for a crack seal machine. Uh, the resolution authorized the city manager to award a bid, uh, through another local purchasing mission, Missouri Department of Transportation, along with state bid. Uh, and then agreeing with the maintenance line for the purchase of a specific model of crack seal super shot one twenty-five feet, long length of the bottle. It's a crack seal machine. Uh, as you know, the council's placed emphasis on comparing streets to replacement streets, breaking them up to standards, how to have them, and are starting to get them. We need to maintain crack sealing is one of the most critical factors to that. Uh, we currently don't have a crack seal machine in any county. Uh, this will be a new machine for our fleet and our city. Um, let's see, what else did I add here? Uh, we did do extensive research on this. Uh, the street department did, they're not the number of models last fall. Uh, I almost said winter, I would have had winter though. Uh, and the, the super shot does have an air compressor on it, and it has delivery price of fifty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. I will say this price is higher than budget, uh, due to a couple items. One being the addition of onboard air compressor unit. Uh, and also just a change with the EPA requirements, uh, on emissions. Uh, if approved tonight and held full, uh, we could expect to see delivery in a unit in sixty days. Crack sealing is something that, um, is weather dependent and season dependent. You should see crack sealing, make it an operation during the spring and in fall. So hopefully, if approved tonight, we'll be able to, um, have it, uh, kind of still do use in spring, um, not that we'd get heavy again in the fall. The council recently just had, we, we did buy a, this would be more, maybe Pro Act, a body crack seal or a patcher for potholes. Uh, the weather has been somewhat illegally warm. We had cruze out, uh, maybe unseen for the last three, four weeks all straight, uh, utilizing it. So great machine, uh, definitely recommend a crack seal machine to continue maintenance for us.
Questions? Any questions? Proceed to vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Takes the resolution two thousand seventeen dash seven.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash seven, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton and Decatur Counties, Missouri, to accept a proposal for two thousand five international seven four hundred with a new leader fifty thirty-four combo spreader from Britain's Ax Solution Group.
I want any motion passed resolution two thousand seventeen dash seven.
Shut up. Sorry.
Moving to second discussion.
Right now, sorry. Just want to let everybody know that we have on tomato warn, um, south of us in Flat County, and also just to the west of us in New Camden County. Our storm spotters are out right now, going out to watch. We will let you know if anything goes on here, just a little bit, everybody's got what's going on.
Thank you.
Um, just a, thanks, it was very, um, just kind of a, a whole, a, a background. Like in two thousand fourteen, when, uh, the city of Cameron started looking at waste product improvements, um, one of the areas that, that was, uh, that needed address was the solid processing. Um, equipment was recently, uh, ended with usual life, um, definitely in, in replacement, if you replace. Um, we also, we've also pointed out that the, uh, solid processing, um, an upgrade there, uh, help with plant capacity, uh, help us be more efficient, um, and help us, uh, be, uh, kind of pending, uh, except for, uh... Um, so it was, it was determined that the city would install a belt filter press, um, therefore, uh, I said that would reduce our solid, uh, for, for four percent silence to sixteen percent silence. Uh, again, it's gonna be a lot more effective, uh, so we, uh, we look forward to installing the belt filter press and adding a truck to the project.
That could be launched.
We're, we're going down fast, uh, I'll talk about that. Uh, so, so when we put this quite together, we've estimated about four thousand dollars cost of truck. Um, that's a new truck, a spreader thing, uh, to meet our needs. Uh, the city has worked with lines throughout this project, um, to find ways to cut costs, um, to keep costs as low as possible, and, uh, this truck was definitely one that we thought we, we could trim a little bit out of this and save some money. Um, so we had HCR evaluate the different vendors capable of buying the truck, the, the truck bed that we needed. And then so it was determined the new leader type of bed that we need to have. Um, so then we went to the local vendor for new leader. And we worked with them to kind of design a truck that would more fit our needs as opposed to a brand new bed or a brand new truck. Uh, so kind of what we came down to is we kind of started looking at that ten to fifteen year old truck chassis. Uh, if you get one of those, uh, the, the, uh, the local leader was able to, her, has the ability to retrofit that and install a new bed on it, um, and again, bring that cost into under a hundred thousand dollars, we're looking at ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. So, um, we were able to trim quite a bit out of the project, uh, project cost. Um, and unfortunately, we're probably gonna have a huge, uh, deflection in the project, but, uh, uh, I said, we were able to save, save a little bit of money there. Um, well, like I said, we did, we did have HCR to evaluate this, uh, so we had worked with the lines to get, try not to, still get what we need to have and, uh, yeah, still be able to operate. And the other problem we're gonna do is the equipment that we currently have is not capable of doing running this, this, this stuff, so we'll, we'll have to work with you some. Um, also plants, we're looking to start the press up here in the next couple weeks, so probably here we'll be looking to spread slower this year, probably been a month, month and a half.
Questions?
I just wanted to say, uh, I appreciate you being a good steward of the city's way and going and finding that truck. That's, thank you.
Well, like I said, I can't take all the, like I said, the line does a very good job with the city. And I think it needs to be noted, like I said, they do a good job of, of, uh, trying, like I said, trying to accomplish our task, give the most cost I can, appreciate it.
Nothing further. Proceed to vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Takes the resolution two thousand seventeen dash eight.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash eight, a resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton and Decatur Counties, Missouri, accepting a bid through the Missouri Department of Transportation bids for a medium duty vehicle and associated snow removal equipment.
I want any motion passed resolution two thousand seventeen dash eight.
So move. Second.
Moving to second discussion.
Thank you again. This is for the purchase of a two thousand seventeen F five fifty dump bed truck. Uh, I think our, our dump bed truck, uh, associated snow removal equipment. Uh, again, this is also through the Missouri Department of Transportation, uh, corporate procurement program. Shawnee Mission Ford was awarded one of the bids for this vehicle, uh, associated snow equipment. Uh, the reason we are looking at recommending Shawnee Mission Ford, uh, according to the state Missouri schedule, did not off on the side of, there were three townish dealers that bid on this. Uh, Columbia, Jefferson City, and St. Louis. There were twelve, nineteen bids that were awarded to the state service of the Ford. Of this, um, there was only one relatively local, close dealer to us that had the Ford. All the bits with the cab and chassis on them, um, and Shawnee Mission. There was one of the loose strings also. Shawnee Mission did also off a bid for the, uh, dump bed, the body, the hydraulics to run the bed, plow, the spreaders, uh, et cetera. Um, again, it's four-wheel drive, F five fifty, regular cab, will replace a nineteen ninety-four, F three fifty dump bed, um, salt spreader and snow plow. Uh, price for the truck and cab, or the cab chest is forty-two ninety-one, but total delivery price of sixty-nine, eight oh four, complete unit. Funding for the purchases, including the street department, town project, uh, delivery community schedule. It's a little bit longer delivery time, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty days. Uh, they have to do the cab, then they have to send it to get the bed, and then they have to send it to get the hydraulics, but also a lot of different moving parts there. Uh, I will say, uh, that this was twelve thousand dollars under what we budgeted, uh, which does help offset the cost of the crack seal machine, which was over the budget by about that much. Uh, we will surplus like the spreader, uh, the plow, a few other miscellaneous, um, pieces of the old equipment that'll also help go towards offsetting the cost of the crack seal machine. So, uh, therefore, we're recommending to, uh, have the city manager execute agreement with Shawnee Mission Ford, uh, for the F five fifty, um, snow plow, associated equipment, uh, salt spreader, dump bed. Uh, this won't be used just exclusively for snow removal. Uh, this would be the truck. Right now, we're using one of the four fifty trucks that's currently in the street department. currently in street department fleet for doing, uh, a couple of patches, and if you ground them back, it's just a little bit too short and small. Uh, also when we load it down with, against snow removal, it's just a little bit too heavy for those four fifties, that's why we're moving this one up to the five fifty.
Questions here? Will proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Takes the resolution two thousand seventeen dash seven.
Resolution two thousand seventeen dash nine. A resolution for the city of Cameron, Clinton, and Decatur counties, Missouri, accepting the city clerk's certification of records destroyed.
Wanting to make a motion to pass the resolution two thousand seventeen dash nine? Move in. Move in second?
Second.
Any discussions?
This is certifying, um, back in February, resolution two thousand seventeen dash three was passed, authorizing it to be done. This is letting you know it hasn't been done, it was shredded. Uh, there's a list of documents attached to both resolutions, so if there's ever a question that comes up in the future on any particular document, uh, we have the documentation of the documents, uh, to know where those records have gone, the freezing, and on space, for staff, and the storage, and, and it's a, it's a good housekeeping project and it's a good thing to do.
Any questions? Will proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next, I have a gentleman, he's helping with this patient, individuals who goes to the council, asks to subject a microphone, here to state the name of the person we're speaking, and then we'll land on that. See, there is none, I think, Mr. Wayne, Spark, John?
Um, just again, I was, after the C P here, I'm glad to hear that he's going to come in and talk to us about the land on a monthly basis, I, I think he can be moving forward as quickly as possible, um, and hopefully he can, uh, he can do something with that.
Ben?
Quick comment. Government's easy to hate. We all see, uh, see us sending our money to D C and, uh, it gets pretty frustrating. But, the local government is completely off the stand. Citizen volunteers in essence. The money you do spend or impose on yourself, it goes back to your true heart community and, uh, so, uh, I know there's a lot of anger out there, the government, we certainly see it on a national level, but, uh, I can tell you, you want to have a nice town, question of yours, question of yours, you come back to, it's going to be after your local government to make it happen. Is that pretty clear, Eric?
All right.
I'm good.
All right. All right, I'm good.
Just one quick comment, as you start to hear the rain hit the ceiling, um, believe it or not, we are kind of starting in the, the beginning of a drought, um, just to kind of update the council a little bit, we're down below eighty percent, uh, of our water capacity left, um, so we like to hear, we like this sound of rain and, uh, um, it is something that we're going to have to continue to monitor for over the next few months, um, but, uh, like I said, we are, we are down a couple of ways.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
And I, you will turn hand over to the chairman.
Um, it's fine.